Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education regular meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. I'm going to ask Dr. Ruffin to read some memorials.
During our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools' education community who have passed away. Veronica Davis, retired from teaching at both Wilson and Sprague Elementary Schools, passed away on July 17th, 2019. Eileen Di Benedetto, retired from being a teacher's aide at Tinker Elementary School, passing away on July 25th. Lori Ann Manetti, an employee at Generali Elementary School, passed away July 25th. Vincent Palladino, retired from being a teacher at Crosby High School, passed away on August 16th. Let us remember them and recognize their service, dedication, and passion, both to the students of Waterbury and those they cared to and care for them this evening.
Commissioner Vanstone, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Commissioner Darno?
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone? President Brown?
Present. Quorum is achieved. Okay. Communications, Commissioner Adorno?
Motion to receive and place on file, communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Is there any public who wishes to speak? Nobody signed up. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed with the calendar. Commissioner Sweeney? There's more from executive.
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment and employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. We're into executive session. We're going to meet over here. I said, "Yeah." I'll say. Where's she sitting? Where are we going? Can I? Yeah, okay. Okay? Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment and employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. We're into executive session. We're going to meet over here. I said, "Yeah." I'll say. Where's she sitting? Where are we going? Can I? Yeah, okay. Okay? Motion to return to the regular order of business. No votes were taken in executive session.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. With the permission of the Board, I'd like to go out of order and go right to Committee on School Personnel. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Item 9.1 regarding the...
Charles, the mic.
Regarding the...
The mic.
Oh.
His first day, sir.
Okay. We don't want to miss a word of this. Item 9.1 on the agenda regarding the Waterbury Arts Magnet School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the superintendent of schools recommends approval of the appointment of Nicholas J. Albini as the principal of the Waterbury Arts Magnet School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved. Second.
Discussion. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to share that Mr. Albini began his career with the Waterbury Public Schools in September of 1999 as an eighth-grade English-language arts teacher at Wallace Middle School. And from 2000 to 2004, he taught English and social studies; and 2004 to 2008, reading at Wallace as well. He became an administrator in Waterbury Public Schools and served in the capacity of an administrator, beginning in 2013. He became an assistant principal at Waterbury Career Academy High School, a post that he recently held until he became principal and is being recommended for a principal of Waterbury Arts Magnet High School. It's without reservation that I do recommend to the Board, Mr. Albini, as the principal of WHAMPS.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call, please.
You want to do roll call? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Of course.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to my school. We will pass a basket around later on. Feel free. But, on a serious note, I am so thrilled to be here. To be truthful, I'm thrilled to be in Waterbury Public Schools. Born, raised, still live here, and I love it. And I love the children. So, I'm just excited. I can't wait to see them next Monday. But I want to thank everyone for their support, and my colleagues at Career Academy, and my colleagues here at Arts Magnet School. I have a great administrative team, an awesome team, great teachers, and I'm excited to start. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your family?
My wife, Mickey.
Who's Mickey?
She's shy. Yeah. Congratulations, honey.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm 12, so...
Thank you so much.
Principal Albini, if you could get the air conditioning going, please? Commissioner Stango, 9.2?
Yes. Item 9.2 regarding Wallace Middle School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the superintendent of schools recommends approval of the appointment of Vincent J. Balsamo as the principal of Wallace Middle School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved. Second.
Discussion. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd just like to share that Mr. Albini began his career with the Waterbury Public Schools in September of 1999 as an eighth-grade English-language arts teacher at Wallace Middle School. And from 2000 to 2004, he taught English and social studies; and 2004 to 2008, reading at Wallace as well. He became an administrator in Waterbury Public Schools and served in the capacity of an administrator, beginning in 2013. He became an assistant principal at Waterbury Career Academy High School, a post that he recently held, until he became principal and is being recommended for a principal of Waterbury Arts Magnet High School. It's without reservation that I do recommend to the Board, Mr. Albini, as the principal of WHAMPS.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call, please.
You want to do roll call? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Of course.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to my school. We will pass a basket around later on. Feel free. But, on a serious note, I am so thrilled to be here. To be truthful, I'm thrilled to be in Waterbury Public Schools. Born, raised, still live here, and I love it. And I love the children. So, I'm just excited. I can't wait to see them next Monday. But I want to thank everyone for their support, and my colleagues at Career Academy, and my colleagues here at Arts Magnet School. I have a great administrative team, an awesome team, great teachers, and I'm excited to start. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your family?
My wife, Mickey.
Who's Mickey?
She's shy. Yeah. Congratulations, honey.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm 12, so...
Thank you so much.
Principal Albini, if you could get the air conditioning going, please? Commissioner Stango, 9.2?
Yes. Item 9.2 regarding Wallace Middle School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the superintendent of schools recommends approval of the appointment of Vincent J. Balsamo as the principal of Wallace Middle School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved. Second.
Discussion. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioners. It is an honor to recommend to the Board, Mr. Van Balsamo, as the principal of Wallace Middle School. Vince has great experience, especially over the last 14 years, has served Waterbury Public Schools successfully in a variety of capacities. Serving as assistant principal at Crosby High School for the past four years, he has also led the ninth-grade academy in implementing project-based learning curricula, strengthening the instructional corps, and scheduling the entire building, and working to meet the needs of students and student population, and has seen success in the students in the ninth-grade cohort under his leadership. Prior to this administrative career, he also taught in a variety of different places, including mathematics courses, and was very instrumental in bringing first robotics program to John F. Kennedy High School here in Waterbury. It is without reservation that I make recommendation for Vincent Balsamo to be the principal of Wallace Middle School.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Principal Albini, if you could get the air conditioning going, please? Commissioner Stango, 9.2?
Yes. Item 9.2 regarding Wallace Middle School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the superintendent of schools recommends approval of the appointment of Vincent J. Balsamo as the principal of Wallace Middle School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved. Second.
Discussion. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioners. It is an honor to recommend to the Board, Mr. Van Balsamo, as the principal of Wallace Middle School. Vince has great experience, especially over the last 14 years, has served Waterbury Public Schools successfully in a variety of capacities. Serving as assistant principal at Crosby High School for the past four years, he has also led the ninth-grade academy in implementing project-based learning curricula, strengthening the instructional corps, and scheduling the entire building, and working to meet the needs of students and student population, and has seen success in the students in the ninth-grade cohort under his leadership. Prior to this administrative career, he also taught in a variety of different places, including mathematics courses, and was very instrumental in bringing first robotics program to John F. Kennedy High School here in Waterbury. It is without reservation that I make recommendation for Vincent Balsamo to be the principal of Wallace Middle School.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin and Board members. I am just so excited to begin work with the staff and administrative team over there at Wallace. Almost said Crosby. In a short time, I've been over there this past week. I understand we have an excellent administrative team. I've met a number of the staff, and I am just so excited for the students to get in front of their faces on Monday. I'm expecting great things. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, first of all, thank Dr. Ruffin for those kind words, and thank the Board and Dr. Ruffin for entrusting me with the children at Wallace Middle School. I also wanted to thank a few people that are here tonight. First, Mrs. Gopi, principal at Crosby High School, for being such a phenomenal mentor. The Crosby administrative team, which we called ourselves the Core Four, thank you so much for your support over the past four years. I've learned so much from you all, and I'm excited to implement that at Wallace. I also wanted to recognize my family. I'm a big family person. My mom and dad are here tonight, and I just want to thank them for everything they've taught me throughout my life, and I just try to make you proud every day. Also, my kids are here, and my wife. Start with my kids. I know they don't probably understand this, but I just want them to understand that I'm just so happy that they remind me to be a kid every day. Just the joys of being a kid is wonderful. And I just want to thank my wife also for being there to support me those long nights and everything, and she's my rock. And, again, just in closing, I'm just looking forward to working with everybody at Wallace Middle School, and also collaborating with all my friends over at Crosby High School, and making sure that Burden Complex really serves the students of Waterbury Public Schools very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. So happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. 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 I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. Congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. Congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you.
Now, is that acceptable to everyone?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Item 9.1.
Charles, the mic.
Regarding the...
The mic.
His first day, sir.
Okay. We don't want to miss a word of this. Item 9.1 on the agenda regarding the Waterbury Arts Magnet School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Nicholas J. Albini as the principal of the Waterbury Arts Magnet School effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to share that Mr. Albini began his career with the Waterbury Public Schools in September of 1999 as an eighth grade English language arts teacher at Wallace Middle School. And from 2000 to 2004, he taught English and social studies. In 2004 to 2008, reading at Wallace as well. He became an administrator in Waterbury Public Schools and served in the capacity of an administrator beginning in 2013. He became an assistant principal at Waterbury Career Academy High School, a post that he recently held until he became principal and is being recommended for a principal of Waterbury Arts Magnet High School. It's without reservation that I do recommend to the board Mr. Albini as the principal of WAMPS.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call, please.
Do you want to do a roll call? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Of course.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome to my school. We will pass a basket around later on. Feel free. But on a serious note, I am so thrilled to be here. To be truthful, I'm thrilled to be in Waterbury Public Schools. Born, raised, still live here, and I love it. And I love the children. So I'm just excited. I can't wait to see them next Monday. But I want to thank everyone for their support and my colleagues at Career Academy and my colleagues here at Arts Magnet School. I have a great administrative team, an awesome team, great teachers, and I'm excited to start. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My wife, Mickey.
Who's Mickey?
She's shy.
Yeah.
Congratulations, honey.
Principal Albini, if you could get the air conditioning going, please. Commissioner Stango, 9.2.
Yes. Item 9.2 regarding Wallace Middle School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Vincent J. Balsamo as the principal of Wallace Middle School effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioners. It is an honor to recommend to the board Mr. Vince Balsamo as the principal of Wallace Middle School. Vince has great experience, especially over the last 14 years, has served Waterbury Public Schools successfully in a variety of capacities, serving as assistant principal at Crosby High School for the past four years. He's also led the ninth grade academy in implementing project-based learning curricula, strengthening the instructional core and scheduling the entire building and working to meet the needs of students and student population and has seen success in the students in the ninth grade cohort under his leadership. Prior to this administrative career, he also taught in a variety of different places, including mathematics courses, and was very instrumental in bringing first robotics program to John F. Kennedy High School here in Waterbury. It is without reservation that I make recommendation for Vincent Balsamo to be the principal of Wallace Middle School.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin and board members. I am just so excited to begin work with the staff and administrative team over there at Wallace. I almost said Crosby. I, in a short time, have been over there this past week. I understand we have an excellent administrative team. I've met a number of the staff and I am just so excited for the students to get in front of their faces on Monday. I'm expecting great things. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, first of all, thank Dr. Ruffin for those kind words and thank the board and Dr. Ruffin for entrusting me with the children at Wallace Middle School. I also wanted to thank a few people that are here tonight. First, Mrs. Gopi, principal at Crosby High School, for being such a phenomenal mentor. The Crosby administrative team, which we called ourselves the Core Four, thank you so much for your support over the past four years. I'm just, I've learned so much from you all and I'm excited to implement that at Wallace. I also wanted to recognize my family. I'm a big family person. My mom and dad are here tonight and I just want to thank them for everything they've taught me throughout my life. And I just try to make you proud every day. Also, my kids are here and my wife. Start with my kids. I just, I know they don't probably understand this, but I just want them to understand that I'm just so happy that they remind me to be a kid every day. Just the joys of being a kid is wonderful. And I just want to thank my wife also for being there to support me those long nights and everything and it just, she's my rock. And again, just in closing, I'm just looking forward to working with everybody at Wallace Middle School and also collaborating with all my friends over at Crosby High School and making sure that Burden Complex really serves the students of Waterbury Public Schools very well. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the fun part of the Board of Education. Okay, 9.3, Commissioner Stango.
9.3 regarding the Westside Middle School House principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the appointment of Michael C. Verino as the house principal of Westside Middle School effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm very pleased to recommend Michael Verino as the house principal at Westside Middle School. Mr. Verino has spent the past 13 years as an administration substitute, working as an interim at Wallace, I'm sorry, at Crosby. He's also been a social studies teacher at Crosby High School and has had a lot of experience in multiple academic and athletic leadership positions as his work in the district. He has served us very well and is with great excitement and without reservation that I recommend Mr. Verino as the assistant principal or the house principal at Westside Middle School.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, President Brown, distinguished Commissioners of the Board of Education, thank you, and I humbly accept my appointment to the position of Westside Middle School House Principal. As a product of the Waterbury Public Schools and as an educator here in Waterbury for the last 13 years, I've acquired firsthand knowledge of both how our teachers and how our educators and how our students can be exemplary. And in my new role, you know, I try, I will try to oversee them maximizing the potential that I've already seen. I would like to thank my family, especially my wife, who is somewhere here with the little ones, you know, just for always supporting me through this whole entire process and also, you know, always supporting my desire to achieve my professional goals. I would also like to thank the leadership team at Crosby High School, Principal Jay Gopi, my mentor Joanna Crudelli, Kathleen Newmark, and the newly named Wallace Assistant Principal, or excuse me, principal Vincent Balsamo, for serving as tremendous role models in my quest to be an administrator. I would also like to thank and finally like to thank the principal Maria Burns of Westside Middle School and the leadership team there for the way they've welcomed me over the past week and also how they've assisted me with basically any need that I would have in my new transition. I'm truly excited for the start of the 2019-2020 school year and I believe it's a true honor to serve as administrator in the Waterbury Public Schools. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We're going to superintendent's announcements now, aren't we? Okay?
Thank you.
Again, thank you all very much and let's give our new leaders a round of applause. Okay, next we'll be going to number six, superintendent's announcements.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to say before our audience leaves and before our newly appointed as well as the supporters are here, I'd like to make note, you know, we've talked about leadership and Dr. Patawa don't leave yet. We've talked about leadership and, you know, we've really building our capacity for leadership in the district and we have some wonderful examples of what that looks like. You know, you can't mandate leadership and I think what we are looking at tonight is an example of what leadership looks like because we have administrative staff from two of the schools supporting members of their staff who are leaving to go on to another campus and supporting them as they are moving into other leadership positions. I think that's a testimony to the leadership at the campus that help build the capacity for the leaders to move on and be selected as leaders as well as the new campus receiving them. I think it speaks volumes to the administrative staff that can come and support their own. I can't tell you enough how you demonstrate by example what that looks like and that's what it looks like. So we do have it in Waterbury. That's an example of it as you're seeing the people, Ms. Gopi, Dr. Patawa, who are here supporting the leaders. I mean, it's a loss to their school, it's a gain for the district and it's such a wonderful testimony to your building capacity within yourself because you get to see your mentees grow and become leaders in the district. So I want to say that because it means a lot when the administration is here and you're here supporting. That means a lot, so I want to thank you for that.
Okay.
Well, we're off to a new school year and the first day of school is Monday. So bright and early, we will be there. The administrative staff, my executive cabinet is going to be out into the schools. Our district office will be there to offer support and so we will welcome our students on August 26th. The 2019-2020 school calendar is also available on our district website. We will have busing routes that are available on our website and I will be visiting schools along with my executive cabinet teams and district team to welcome students and staff back for this wonderful school year. We are also scheduling community meetings, which will be designed by feeder patterns and expect to be doing that during the month of September. And we will be sending out iris alerts to inform parents so that they can attend at the meeting that is most convenient for them. The new academic academy at Wallace Middle School will be welcoming 159 students on the very first day of school and we will be having an open house tomorrow from 12 noon to 1 o'clock at Wallace Middle School so that our teachers and our parents and our students can tour their new classrooms. Wendell Cross, which will be relocating at St. Joe's, will also host two open houses tomorrow for our parents to tour the new site and ask any questions that they may have of the principal as well as any of our staff. The tours will be respectively from 1 to 3 p.m. and again from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. There has also been a tremendous support for the back-to-school rally, which was held yesterday. I would like to personally thank the Waterbury Youth Services, PAL, Waterbury Police Department, the City of Waterbury and the mayor's office, as well as the Waterbury Public School employees and all of the vendors who came out to support our students. It was a great turnout in spite of the rain. Our teachers, administrators, and support staff have been engaged in thoughtful and intentional professional development yesterday and today, as well as we welcomed over 110 new teachers to the district in professional development and in orientation, which all occurred this week. And again, a reminder that our very first day of school is on August 26th, which is Monday. Parents, encourage you to have all of your students, all of your children, have all of the appropriate records and immunization records so that we can start a real healthy and productive and exciting 2019-2020 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly, I'd like to echo the comments of Dr. Ruffin. It was an amazing turnout. I went to Fulton Park yesterday and I was overwhelmed with seeing lines and lines of families, aunts, uncles, grandparents, little kids. It was amazing support for our students. Thank you to all the organizations who made that possible. I'm not sure if they ran out of whatever they ran out of, but I don't know if they expected that many people, but it was an amazing turnout of our community on behalf of our children. Okay. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I want to really welcome back our students and our families as well as our amazing staff. And I really have to say kudos to our wonderful staff in central office, our assistant superintendents, our deputy superintendent, all of our people who worked so hard this summer to really make sure that our students and our school year kickoff would be one of the best that we've ever seen. I had an opportunity to go to Chase Building many times over the summer and I can't tell you how many, how impressed I was with the activity that was going on and the enthusiasm that was going on as all the planning took place. So we really appreciate all your hard work and we're really looking forward to an amazing school year for our students. So thank you all very much. Dr. Ruffin has something?
Yes. Tomorrow, our typical kickoff to the school year will be a little different. I will be welcoming our staff tomorrow via livestream and I will be at Crosby. So the faculty and staff of Crosby and Wallace Middle School will be able to come into the auditorium and we're going to do a livestream of the actual welcome. My executive cabinet, as well as members from the central office, will be present as well. And other members of our staff will be able to view it from their respective campuses. The reason why I've chosen to do it this way is to eliminate any traveling across the district and potential problems with the parking. It's always a challenge when we attempt to do that and sometimes there's wasted time in coming to and going back to their school sites. And I want to spend as much time tomorrow with the professional development, but at the same time, I think it's very important to set the tone and the vision for the district and that everybody hears it with one unified voice. We will begin promptly in the morning at 9 o'clock. There will be an address from the mayor, one from President Brown, as well as you will be able to meet members of my executive staff and we will proceed with a very short, a very succinct message about the vision for the next school year.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Adorno, who's our resident expert, health expert, on what are the real, what requirements of our students in terms of immunizations and physicals so that people really know? If you could just give us a summary.
Sure. So for the parents, the state mandates for physicals and certain vaccinations for every pre-K, kindergarten, sixth grade, and 10th grade. So if your child was a sixth grader, for example, last year and they are now entering 7th grade and the nurses' office still do not have the most recent physical and/or immunizations, they will unfortunately be excluded from school. They will not be able to start until the nurses' office receive what is missing from your child. So utilize the school-based clinics at the school. They did have all year to get those into the nurses' office. There's been a lot of communication back and forth between iris alerts, letters sent home. But again, the grades are pre-K, kindergarten, 6th grade, and 10th grade. The vaccinations vary depending on the grade that you are in. But please call your, the nurses' office. The principals have the list of the students. Obviously, the nursing staff are going back tomorrow. There is a lot of training in between with the health department, but tomorrow their nurses will be there and the public health aides. So reach out to them if your child is still on that list because every school principal will have a list of every student that is still non-compliant. And we really want the students to be in school. So I just hope and urge the families to really get out there and get your physicals and believe it or not, most of them already have it. We just don't have it. So we just need a copy of it. So that's the good news. At least, you know, some kids don't have to get re-vaccinated. If they're vaccinated, they're covered. We just need the proof. So please talk to your doctor, your provider. Make sure that you have the most updated physicals. If you are a current pre-K, kindergarten, 6th grade, or 10th grade, you have all year to provide this. So as soon as you get the requirements that you need, your primary doctor, your pediatrician would know that. Hand it a copy straight to the nurses' office so that at least one listing you have to worry about for the next school year. Okay? And thank you and wish every student good luck and I'll be there to see them off. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is the consent calendar. Is there anybody who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Read the consent calendar. 10.1. Request approval of a college facility request reservation agreement with Noggetuck Valley Community College. 10.2. Request approval of a student intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University for speech-language pathology student internships. 10.3. Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education State After-School Grant for the following Wallace and Westside Middle Schools. 10.4. Request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education State After-School Grant Program for Hopeville School, Tinker, and Duggan Schools at Chase Park House. Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education State After-School Grant Program for Kingsbury and Wilson Schools. Number 10.6. Request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Primary Mental Health Program Grant for Duggan, Cross, and Sprague Schools. 10.7. Request approval of a license agreement with Uncommon Schools for Teach Like a Champion online training sessions. 10.8. Request approval of professional services agreement with the National Center on Education and the Economy for Department of Education Professional Development Services with National Center on Education and the Economy. That's very wordy. 10.9. Request approval of a letter of agreement with Waterbury Symphony Orchestra, Inc., that we're very excited about. And 10.10. Request approval of an agreement with Ambassador Wheelchair Services, Inc. for transportation for medically fragile students and/or students with disabilities and/or McKinney-Vento students. 10.11. Request approval of revisions to the high school graduation exit criteria policy, number 6146. 10.12. Request approval of the new policy entitled Equity Policy, 0523. 10.13. Use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 10.14. Use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. But I have a motion. Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, thank you. Number 12, Committee on Policy and Legislation, Commissioner Sweeney. 12.1.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the removal/deletion of the recess policy 6142.62.
Discussion.
Could you just understand what it is?
Yes, could you summarize, please?
The, we had two policies. This one was put into place a number of years ago to clarify the hours of recess in the school district. The state has put forth a policy, a legislation that mandates 20 minutes a day conflicted with this policy and the policy that we have, it already covers everything, so this is not needed anymore. So we're going to remove it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Commissioner Sweeney, 12.2, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised student data protection and privacy cloud-based issues policy, number 3520.13.
Discussion.
Again, could we just have a summary for the public that's watching?
Please summarize.
Right, we went through this policy several months ago. And it was forwarded to corp counsel for them to review for any issues. The only issue that they found was that the policy states that the board enters into a contract in the City of Waterbury by charter. The board cannot enter into a contract. The city enters into the contract on the board's behalf. So we made the changes to that language. But the policy had been reviewed months ago by the committee and approved.
So now I do have a question. I apologize. So the title of student data protection, the, is it relevant to the document we're talking about or a contract? Because I'm not understanding how, who enters into a contract is related to the name of student data protection. I apologize for the confusion.
It's okay. So the state has mandated guidelines for how you can, how, what components the contract for student data privacy have to include and they have charged boards of education with making sure that that occurs. However, in Waterbury, we, as a board, cannot enter into the contract. So the city enters into the contract on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Whatever I say. I'm so, opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Let's see, where are we now? Committee on Building and School Facilities, Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement between the Waterbury Development Corp. Corporation and Van Zelm Haywood &amp; Shafford Incorporated for commissioning services for the Wendell Cross School Renovation and Construction Project, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Commissioner, 13.2.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education, Board of Education, approve Form SCG 042, a request for review of final plans for the Wendell Cross project, number 151-0295, EARR, Phase One of Five, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. If you could just, Commissioner, just summarize what this means in terms of the progress of Wendell Cross?
This means we're on target excitedly and once we get this piece of paper signed, which I think is in the process of happening, we can send this off to the state and this kind of officially starts our project and this gets everyone working. It allows us to start beginning taking some look at the site and before you know it, it's going to be a hive of activity.
Thank you. We're very excited about that and thanks to all the work of staff for making this possible. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Committee on Curriculum, Commissioner Awad.
If there's any questions during this presentation, Vice Principal Harris is here. But the Committee on Curriculum recommends that the Board of Education approve an agreement with Medi LLC, Doing Businesses Ilet Design, to provide a manufacturing externship pre-apprenticeship program for the Waterbury Career Academy High School students. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. And 14.2, Commissioner?
Again, the Committee on Curriculum recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve an agreement with MEC LLC, DBA Ilet Crafters, to provide a manufacturing externship or pre-apprenticeship program for the Waterbury Career Academy High School students. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. And if I could ask, thank you very much, Mr. Harris, do you want to just come to the podium and just explain briefly what this really means for our students? We're very excited about it.
Good evening. It's like when I was here, I believe in January, February, we brought two new companies in for pre-apprentice internships for our students and now we just landed two more facilities. One of our students will be placed within the next two weeks there, starting full-time after school. We run internships, job shadows with both of these companies, so they're just new to getting pre-apprentices assigned into their buildings and they're very close. One's on South Main Street and one's right at the bottom of Wall Street, right across from the mall, so on East Main and Wettland.
Thank you very much. This is great for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Could I have a motion?
Motion received and placed on file, Superintendent's Notification to the Board, items 15.1 through 15.6.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. 16, unfinished business, a preceding meeting only. 17, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, President Brown. Just want to mention that Crosby, on August 17th, Crosby had its walk for success. It was on a Saturday, I think the weather held up for us, but I just want to just extend the thank you to the teachers and staff that were there as well as our community and community groups that turned out to assist with going out and welcoming our ninth graders coming into Crosby. So again, I just want to just publicly thank the community for coming out. Seems to get bigger and bigger. Crosby's Walk for Success, this was the fifth year and just the cooperation is just wonderful to see. So I just wanted to thank the public for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We don't have another second discussion? Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Have a good evening.